I now reconvene the regular meeting of the Board of Education at 6:00 PM with Bridge, Cruz, Schaefer, and Gagne present. Before we begin, please silence all electronic devices and note that these proceedings are being recorded. Pat.
The Board met in closed session from 5:05 PM to...
5:20?
5:20 PM regarding Student Discipline Matters, Public Employee Appointment, Elementary School Assistant Principal, Public Employee Discipline, and Public Employee Performance Evaluation Superintendent. The Board appointed Cynthia Palacios as Assistant Principal, Capitol Elementary School, effective date to be determined by a vote of three to two, with Bridge, Schaefer, and Gagne voting yes, and Cruz and Nau absent during the vote. There are no further actions taken that require public disclosure.
Thank you. Leading the Pledge of Allegiance tonight is Mr. Bridge.
Please stand and place your flag, your hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Gagne, let me correct that. I think I said three to two. It was three zero. For Cynthia Palacios.
Thank you for the correction. We are now at Item 1C, Recognition. Every year, State Assembly Member Freddie Rodriguez awards an Educator of the Year Award to educators throughout his assembly district. This year, unfortunately, our Board had a preceding regular Board meeting on October 6th, so none of the members of the Board were able to attend. So I wanted this evening to honor the educator from our district who received this award from the Assembly Member this evening. Before I have her join me at the podium, I just want to read some accolades. And first and foremost, I found out it's your birthday, so wish you a happy birthday. Christine Ives was recognized as the 2022 Educator of the Year for District 52. She has been with Chino Valley since 1999 and served as a teacher at Walnut Avenue Elementary School for 14 years. In 2014, she began her new role as a site instructional coach and is currently a district elementary instructional coach. Ms. Ives exhibits a high-level professionalism and has been instrumental on numerous district curriculum committees, helping lead the work with developing curricular plans for English Language Arts, Math, and Science, and advancing professional learning communities. She also provides mentoring support for new teachers as part of the New Teacher Induction Program. As a cheerleader for our students and Chino Valley Unified enthusiasts, we are proud that Christine Ives has been selected as a 2022 Educator of the Year in Assembly District 52. And if you can join me at the podium right here?
On behalf of Chino Valley Unified School District, I want to thank you for all your service, and I want to present you with the Certificate of Repetition of the District.
Thank you. I was going to say, do any Board members have any comments? Okay, coming back. Do any Board members have any comments? Mr. Schaefer?
Yes, I just want to say congratulations. And again, sorry we couldn't be there. It's been a scheduling conflict for the last couple of years with the Simulman's Office, but congratulations once again, and thank you for all of your service to our students.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Bridge?
I too want to add my congratulations and thank you. And again, sorry that we couldn't be there because of the conflict, and we're trying to get that resolved, but we appreciate all you've done for this district. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We are now at our next item, which is comments from our student representative, Ms. King.
Board President Gagne, Members of the Board, Superintendent Enfield, and distinguished guests, hello everyone. I am glad to be back. I palled out for my attendance last meeting and was unable to be here. This past month, all high schools have had their homecoming with great outcomes at Chino Hills High, or at all, great outcomes at all. Chino Hills High sold a record for them of over 1,500 tickets. Fall sports season is beginning to wrap up with many senior nights passing and coming up. Sports such as Chino Hills Cross-Country and Volleyball, Don Lugo Volleyball, Chino High Tennis, and possibly Boys Water Polo are all going into CIF. Also more sports to follow up as the seasons are ending. And then good luck to all of our seniors throughout the district with college applications. Be sure to check out your school's Career Center or Accounting Department for workshops with help on all of those. I wish everyone a happy Halloween. It is right around the corner. Thank you, and have a great rest of your night.
Thank you, Ms. King. We are now to Item 1E, Comments from Employee Representatives. We will start with Brenda Walker, ACT President.
Good evening, President Gagne, School Board Members, Superintendent Enfield, District Staff, and CBUSD Community and Guests. First, on behalf of the Association, I want to thank Assembly Member Freddie Rodriguez for recognizing the hard work and dedication of educators in our area, and congratulations to Chris Ives for being selected as one of the Educators of the Year in the 52nd Assembly District. Your commitment to the students and educators of our district shows in everything that she does. In just a little bit, you, the Board, will be voting on the ratification of the tentative agreement between ACT and the district. We want you to know that 90% of our membership approved this agreement, and we all hope that the Board votes in favor of the agreement, which will confirm your commitment to supporting our educators. Thank you so much for your attention tonight. Have a good one.
Thank you. Is there any representative from CSCA here this evening? I don't see Mr. Hernandez. Seeing none, we'll move on to Ms. Barbara Beard, and Chair, President.
Good evening, President Gagne, School Board Members, Dr. Enfield, Cabinet, and Chino Valley Community. On behalf of the administrators in Chino Valley, I would like to thank our Human Resources Department, our school sites, and the community for honoring Administrators' Week last week. Congratulations to Christine Ives, I'm sad she left already, for being recognized as Educator of the Year is an amazing honor that is well-deserved. Next week, school sites will participate in red ribbon activities. It is important that we have honest conversations with our children about the dangers of drugs. Recently, we have heard of too many kids dying from an overdose or exposure. Keeping the line of communication open with your kids is imperative to their success in life. This year's theme, Celebrate Life, Live Drug-Free, is a great way to introduce the topic and the importance of living a drug-free life. Parents, please talk to your kids about their goals and how they can accomplish those goals by making good choices. As we approach Halloween, whether you celebrate it or not, there will be a lot of candy available. Please check the candy before your child enjoys it. I think it is more important this year than ever. Changing topics, open enrollment is right around the corner. Beginning November 1st, parents can request a transfer for the 23-24 school year. This is especially important for families in sixth and eighth grades who are at their current school on a transfer. You will need to reapply for the transfer to the next school if you want your child to continue at the middle school or high school their peers will be attending. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Have a wonderful weekend.
Thank you. We are now at comments from the audience and items not on the agenda. Pat, are there any requests to speak?
Seven.
Thank you. Speakers will be called in the order the requests were received. Please listen for your name and be prepared to approach the podium. Any comments on agenda items will be accepted during consideration of that item. Once the Board has commenced deliberations on an issue, speaker cards will not be accepted. The Board is very interested in your comments, but please bear in mind that the Board typically does not respond to comments during this time on the agenda, as it is reserved specifically for public comments. Individual members may respond during Board comments at the end. Additionally, the Board does its best to support the public's right to address selected officials. It is also important that the Board conduct its business in orderly and fair fashion, as provided in Board Bylaw 9323. In the event that an unusual amount of speaker cards is submitted for any item, the Board will hear up to 30 minutes of comments. In the case of non-agenda items, the Board can, if it chooses, hear the remainder of comments after business has been conducted. Further, this bylaw states in part, individual speakers will be allowed three minutes to address the Board. A speaker may not use the podium for purposes other than addressing the Board directly. If there are no further comments, a speaker will be considered to relinquish his or her allotted three minutes. This means that speakers cannot donate their time to another speaker, which in effect can give a speaker more than three minutes. The exception is when non-English speakers require a translator. Mr. Cruz, do you mind explaining the light system?
Speakers, you have three minutes. Limited remarks to new points at the green light. You have 30 seconds left. The red light means it's over. You can adjust the microphone. And please refrain from making comments while speaking at the podium. Thank you.
The first speaker is Sonia Shaw, followed by Cindy Foisey, followed by Wayne M.
Good evening, guys. I'm safe. You can trust me. We don't have to tell your parents. Statements like these are used by predatory adults to create distance between a child and their parents. It is one of the steps in the groomer's playbook. So why am I bringing it up here? Because you allow to Chino Valley School to give a training for teachers with those same exact statements. I'm sure it was disguised as an inclusion workshop or something like that, teaching them laws and codes that are put in place to create more...
Junior high. I'm not calling our teachers child predators in any way, but we all know that it does happen, and policies like these ones open the door for it, making it easier for those who set out to hurt our kids. When is enough enough? We have warned you continuously, if you are not transparent with this community, we will be. We are watching, and we will let the community know. You are so proud of what you're doing, and yet you hide it from us as parents. It is so disappointing, the way that you're handling this very sensitive topic. So some of you have said, and I heard the comments, send your kids to private school. And we all know that's just insane. Why should we send our kids to private school? Because you want to have a bigger say in how they're raised than their parents. The community pays for this district, and I can tell you, Christina, you are wrong by referring to us as a minority. I personally met with thousands of people in this community, not just parents, and they do not support this grossness. The majority of them are not okay with what's being pushed in our schools. You have created a mess in an environment that's no longer safe for our children. Parents will know. They need to know. Change is needed, and change is needed now. Enough is enough. It's really disgusting what you're doing to our children.
Thank you.
Cindy Foisey, followed by Wayne M., followed by Misty S.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, thank you, Mrs. Gagne, for finally admitting that the majority of this school board is just a giant rubber stamp for the radical-left ideology. That includes the California Department of Education, Mr. Tony Thurmond, your friend and campaigner, and the California School Board Association. Check out Mr. Thurmond's Ethnic Studies Model Curriculum. Who is the CSBA? It is the same group that had a membership with the National School Board Association, the NSBA. The NSBA is the same group that sent the letter to Merrick Garland, calling for us parents to be considered domestic terrorists. The CSBA severed its ties with the NSBA as of June this year, citing as one reason, lack of support for policy issues of importance to California. Nineteen of 21 of the states that have or are severing its ties with the NSBA are red states, citing political difference. NSBA must not be radical enough for the CSBA. My second important issue, has anyone on this Board made a phone call or emailed the CDC or FDA to vote no on the COVID vaccine being placed on the immunization registry for the school-aged children? I think we know the answer to that. There has been enough deaths and injuries caused by these COVID vaccines, and it is being pushed on the registry so that no one can be held accountable for this experimental carnage that has been levied on the world. The lying corrupt health organizations Fauci, Media Cabal, with Newsom to coerce the so-called safe and effective vaccine, have already been exposed on the whole COVID pandemic. Remember, my body, my choice. Remember, informed consent. Remember parental rights. How many more students will leave this district or state? Maybe this is what will destroy the California education system so that we, the parents, grandparents, the families, can transform this education system back to what it's meant to do, educate, not indoctrinate. Concentrate only on reading, writing, real math, real history, and real science, and our children will be able to pursue their inalienable rights and the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Your, for the children and their safety? Yeah, right. In other words, stand up to this woke globalist garbage because standing up is never too late. Keep your hands off and your smut out of our children. If you're one that still believes the lying mainstream media and newspapers, Big Tech, CDC, Fauci, or health organizations, then I pray for you. Their day is coming.
Wayne M., followed by Misty S., followed by Caitlin.
Good evening, Chair, Board, and Community. We need new leadership, and this is the reason why. In 2013, a bill was passed, AB 1266, transgender students have legal rights to access sex segregated facilities with gender identity. What the bill is saying is the rights of a few supersede the rights of all other students. No students should be forced to share bathrooms or changing clothes in front of opposite sex. Now, eight years later, the transgender group leading by a person here, not here tonight, this is where my blood boils. In 2014, my daughter arrives home from school and says, Dad, what am I going to do? This guy's trying to use this new gender identity law to enter the girl's restroom. It's a terrible place for her, Dad, worrying if your daughter is going to be sexually assaulted at school. If the courts can't take care of it, you're putting us dads in a very, I'll leave it at a precarious, situation. You are putting multitude of families at high risk. The craftiness of the individuals in the state, the school board, and the union are inviting chaos, confusion, and supporting multitude of problems. We care about all of our kids, but this transgender bill is disrespectful to our students and should not be allowed in our schools. Listen, I speak for a cousin that was caught up into a call atmosphere that pushed transgender ideologies, and was encouraged to change her identity. He highly regrets the decisions that she made as a young lady. That's why we should not be encouraging this movement. At the Board meetings, when caught, you will hear comments, this is not the place for politics at the Board meeting. Our kids need to learn. But after watching for a year now and listening to all the Board meetings, they are very political, and it's all about politics. You have two groups. You have dedicated mothers and fathers honoring and fighting to protect our students in a professional learning environment, and extremist left group pushing their agendas and bringing political unrest to our Board meetings. So men, don't let your families down. This is where we are the voters, and we have the power to vote, and I mean all parties, Republican, Democrats, and other parties. Please vote for the representatives to protect our kids and future. Do a little research, and then talk to those dads in our sporting events and other activities about the November 8 elections. James Nau is not here.
Thank you.
Ted Cruz.
Thank you.
You guys hold strong.
Thank you.
Misty S., followed by Oscar Avila, followed by Michael Sherman.
For the past two months, I have been out walking and knocking doors for two of my friends that are running for the school board. I have literally talked to hundreds, hundreds of people, and what I have found is that they are just like me. They have so many concerns. They're frustrated, and they're simply baffled. I would like to share, in no particular order, a few of these comments that I have received. One parent, J.C., said, "I can't send a cough drop to school with my kid, but they can let my kid leave school to get an abortion or a sex change and not let me know about it." What happens if my daughter gets an abortion, and that night she spikes a fever, has some kind of infection, hemorrhages, et cetera, and I don't know because I was not told? Or what if she dies during the night because no one checked on her because we didn't know? Or she's hospitalized for a week? Who's going to pay for that? Are they going to pay for the therapy later if she regrets her decision? I had to sign a paper for my senior daughter to get permission to leave the campus for lunch, but yet she can go and do whatever she wants and get an abortion or a sex change without me knowing? I have to sign a paper for a field trip. I have to sign a paper for my child to watch a movie at school. What is going on in this state? It is horrifying. I work at two surgical centers as a nurse. If we have somebody under 18 years old, whether they are there for tonsils, a broken wrist, hernia, tubes in their ears, whatever it is, I have to have a parent consent, and that is nothing compared to an abortion and not knowing about it. I would hope that you guys can see that this is a concern of many parents. I had a parent tell me, if you have kids in sports, especially varsity sports, weekday games are so late, and because school is so late, they have no time to do their homework until almost midnight. Another, J.O., said, "My daughter's in color guard and band. She comes home from school for an hour, then goes back to practice till 9:30. I hate the 30 minutes that was added. It does not make up for anything. Where are our priorities? It's not on education." The parent, there is a 1995 Parent Act that said, you need to protect the rights of parents in upbringing their kids.
Oscar Avila, followed by Michael Sherman, followed by Caitlin.
Good evening, Board. It's crazy. We went from education to indoctrination, you know? I've never heard so much talk about sex, so long with a teenager. So I keep on thinking, why are we going down this path? Why are we, why is society going this way, where literally people that are not parents are starting to take over the role of parents? I'm Latino. Latino, we're conservative. We don't allow, what's happening now is going to come out, you're going to hear about it, but what's happening now is we're having the state or elected Board members allow these people to come into our schools and perform drag queen shows. There are shows that happened in Redlands recently. There's one scheduled in Riverside. I got family that works there. They tell me about it. I hope we never do that here. Hope we never have anything happen here, but we're going to show up in numbers. That's not acceptable. You want to have a little freak show, you have it on your own, not with kids. That's against the law, you know? Years ago, if you did that, you'd get arrested. Now it's called education or whatever, inclusion or whatever. As a parent of Latino, we believe in life. We believe in family and marriage. We believe in rights of the parents. We believe in order. We believe in accountability. You know, we don't believe in the state or somebody else raising our kids. That's never going to happen here. So I keep on thinking, why is this happening, right? Why are we going down this road? And then I began to look at our candidate here that we have, our incumbent, right? And then I realized that 95% of your donations are out of state, out of the area. 64 are out of state, and 30% are from DC. And not that, but only 4% of your entire donation package, people that live in the area. So I'm thinking, why is it so popular? You know, I mean, you're like going viral everywhere, right? So I have a list of your donors, right, with public notice, right? Attorney of U.S. Department of Justice of DC and California, Attorney of U.S. Government, DC, COD, DC Bar, Maryland, Attorney of U.S. DOD, DC, Political Operative House of Majority PAC, DC, New York Historical Society, Maryland, Union Rep. American Federation of State, County, and Employees of AFL-CIO, whatever that is, Development Directive of National Arts Fund, Foundation, Virginia, Government, the White House, DC, State Resident of Pennsylvania Legislature, United Food and Commerce Workers International Union, Active Ballot Club, DC, United Steel Workers, District 12, California, Non-Federal PAC, Bricklayers, Alacant, California, Build the Bench PAC, Chino Valley Democrat Club 1, L.A., Planned Parenthood, that's a big one, Planned Parenthood, right? We're going that way now. And Connie Leva, of course, the princess, Chino's CTA, California Employee Association, Atlanta Empire. So it's a whole lot of people that don't live in the area, but the DC thing and the Planned Parenthood thing really worries me.
Thank you.
Michael Sherman, followed by Caitlin.
Hello. My name is Michael Sherman. Parent here of two kids in the district. Don't have any prepared plans to speak, but I wanted to speak on, I would like to request that the Board deny the state the power to inject our kids with pretty much a still experimental vaccine. If it does pass, I believe that we have the power to stop them. There's no reason why, if it doesn't affect transmission, doesn't help transmission, it doesn't really, we don't really know if it really helps because I'm not vaccinated. I had COVID, no issue. No, my kids had COVID. They were fine. Did it suck? Yeah, it sucked, but it wasn't horrible. They got over it, Tylenol. It's about it. So were they vaccinated? Would they have been better? I don't know. Maybe. Maybe not. Maybe worse. According to recent studies, they're finding potentially blood clots. A lot of the mortuaries are saying, hey, we're taking us longer to process dead bodies because the blood's coagulated, which is not normal. So I don't want my kids having that. I will take them out of the school. If they pass it today and you guys don't do anything to stop it, I'm out. This year, not next year. I'm not waiting, just because I'm principal. Second, I don't like, what he said, Oscar, the, a lot of the outside support for a candidate in a local election doesn't quite sit well with me too much, especially Planned Parenthood and others. It seems like, you know, there's ulterior motives, I think. And I guess that's about it. That's all I can think of right now, off the top of my head. But I'm not happy, and I'll be fighting for whatever I can. On that note.
Thank you.
Caitlin? Caitlin?
Okay, so I'm wanting to address mainly you, Enfields. You never in the hot seat yet. You always drop the ball on everyone. You are not an elected official. You are an employee. We pay for you to keep your electricity bill on, to keep your mortgage, keep the cars in your driveway, yet you guys pick and choose what bylaws you want to honor for us. We go and we ask for action items, and you and Gagne go and say, oh, no, we're going to disregard that. Yet you push back on us when we try and go and push on you guys. You guys, oh, no, 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 there's bylaws in place. You pick and choose. And I know Gagne is a DNC politician, not for the parents. That's very apparent. This is a stepping stone for her. But you, this is your job. We will come for your seat. And relax, Schaefer, don't call the police on me. This isn't a threat, but I'm telling you right now, we will come for your job. You pick and choose what action items you want to go for, and we will come for your seat. You don't get to do that. You don't get to play politics. You are not an elected official. You are an employee, and we pay for your seat there. We pay for your bills. We pay for your living wages. Remember that. When we, as parents, pay our taxes for you to sit in that seat, I'm not... I'm not speaking to any of you, you are a dead ends meet. You are not for us, you don't speak for us. Bridge, you are just a sitting position. Schaefer, you're out. Outside of that, you know who I'm talking to. You need to stand up for the parents and stop playing along and pandering to the people that you know is gonna make it in the end. That's not how this works. If you're gonna be in your position, you need to speak for the parents and for the kids. So when we ask for bylaws to be honored, you don't get to go and try and find loophole, and then we ask on the other end for bylaws, you push back and say, "Oh, no, 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 sorry." That doesn't work that way. It's hypocritical, and we're tired of it, and I'm watching you. So you need to watch it. And again, Schaefer, don't call the police on them. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the end of our public comments. We are now at item 1G, Changes and Deletions. Pat, are there any changes or deletions?
There are no changes or deletions.
Thank you, Pat. We are now on to action items. Our first action item in the evening is item 2A1, Public Hearing and Ratification of the Tentative Agreement between the Chino Valley Unified School District and the Associated Chino Teachers effective July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025. Recommend the Board of Education conduct a public hearing and ratify the tentative agreement between the Chino Valley Unified School District and the Associated Chino Teachers effective July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025. I now open this hearing at 6:30 PM. Do we have any speakers?
Lisa Greathouse.
Good evening. First of all, I wanna say how incredibly disappointing it is to see so-called adults in this community behaving so poorly during this election season. Today, I had supporters all over this community reporting crudely handwritten signs posted with lies and smears about myself and Board President Gagne. While I know that this juvenile behavior says more about our opponents and their supporters than it does about us, it's distressing to know that there are people in this community who don't know how to behave with civility and in accordance with the law, even when you feel passionately about a subject. Is this the example we want to be setting for the youth in our community? Onto a more positive note. I wanna congratulate the incredibly hard-working teachers, nurses, speech pathologists, psychologists, counselors, as well as our staff of bus drivers, security, nutrition services, warehouse, custodial and support staff for standing up and making their voices heard. These are the people who keep our district running and care for our students. I commend Dr. Enfield and the Cabinet for taking their concerns into consideration and finding common ground in contract negotiations, and I trust the Board will approve this contract. But we're not done. I hope we keep in mind that we need to do a better job in this district of being proactive in keeping our wages and benefits competitive with surrounding districts. If we don't, we will again find ourselves in a situation where we are losing amazing teachers and staff. And that's something that this district cannot afford. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no further speakers, so I will close this public hearing at 6:32 PM. Now, we will move on to a vote on this action item. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. Bridge, may I have a second? Second from Mr. Schaefer. Any comments, questions, or discussion on this item? Mr. Bridge?
Just very quickly, I'm pleased to see that the association and the district, along with CSCA and the district, have been able to come to agreements and get this done as soon as possible. Where you get it done is at the table, and I'm glad to see that both sides got to the table and finished it off in a timely manner, so I appreciate that. I'm proud to support this agreement tonight.
Any other comments, questions, or discussion?
Point of inquiry and request that we do a roll call vote, please.
Okay, there's been a request for a roll call vote. Before I take that request, any other comments? Right, seeing no motion to speak and no lights, we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote. Mr. Bridge?
Hi.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, preferential?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries four, zero, with preferential voting yes. Moving on to the next action item, which is item 2A2, Public Hearing and Ratification of the Tentative Agreement between the Chino Valley Unified School District and the California School Employees Association and its Chino Chapter 102 effective July 1st, 2022. Recommend the Board of Education conduct a public hearing and ratify the tentative agreement between the Chino Valley Unified School District and the California School Employees Association and its Chino Chapter 102 effective July 1st, 2022. I now open the public hearing at 6:34 PM. Are there any speakers?
There are none.
Seeing as there are no speakers, I will also close this hearing at 6:34 PM. Now for a vote. May I get a motion?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Bridge, may I get a second? Second from Mr. Schaefer. Any comments, questions, or discussion on this item?
Request a roll call vote.
Okay, there's been a request for a roll call vote. Before I proceed, are there any comments or questions or discussion? All right, seeing no lights and seeing no motion to speak, I'll go ahead and take a vote. Mr. Bridge?
Hi.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, preferential?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries four, zero, with preferential voting yes. Next is item 2A3, Approval of Salary Increases for Management and Classified Confidential Employees. Recommend the Board of Education approve the salary increases for management and classified confidential employees as follows. Provide an 8.75% on-schedule salary increase for the 2022-2023 school year effective July 1st, 2022. A 2% off-schedule one-time payment as of July 1st, 2022 on the 2022-2023 base salary. And approve the revised salary schedule. Are there any speakers?
We have two speakers on item 2A3.
Okay.
Sonia Shaw, followed by Misty S.
I'll touch on the raise thing in a second, but apparently the first thirty to forty-five seconds of my speech got cut off for the online crew. So, I said, "I'm safe, you can trust me, we don't have to tell your parents." Statements like these are used by predatory adults to create distance between a child and their parents, and it's one of the steps in the groomer's playbook. So why am I bringing this up here? Because you allowed it here in Chino Valley, at a school, actually, a junior high here, to give a training for teachers with those same exact statements. Now, let's read this actual article that came out today in its national news. "A California school district is reportedly instructing teachers to conceal students' gender identities from parents. Teachers are instructed to not share this information without permission from the students." If they go to this town hall document that is now national, you guys and the community should be sickening. You actually all know about it. Dr. Enfield knows about it, you know about it, you all know about it, you guys hid it. I told you it was gonna come out, and here it is. There's documents, there's slides, and you guys actually trained our teachers on how to keep these things from their parents. How gross is that? How far are you guys gonna take this? An in-service training? Who paid for it? I'm still waiting for that. Who paid for it, Dr. Enfield? Be man enough to explain who paid for it. You're about to get another raise that you just got one a few months ago. I mean, you're getting the money, so why don't you protect our children? Yes, I'm very upset because this is gross, this is grooming, and you are actually training our teachers in an in-service that's required for them to sit through that disgusting, horrible training for two and a half hours with slides that are awful. If you guys go to this town hall thing, I linked it on my page, you would be horrified what our teachers are being trained to tell the kids. It's awful. When is this gonna stop? You're gonna censor me, block off my speaking online so people can't hear me, try to quiet me up, try to threaten my family, play games with my children? Come on, enough is enough. I'm not going away. Two years you tried to hurt me and my family. Am I still here? You know why? Because our kids are important, our community is important. I was born and raised here, and I won't give up on our kids and our community. I'm not gonna bail out, and until, I told you, I told you about two years ago. If you don't do your job and you don't protect our students, I'm gonna take that seat. I didn't want it, but I'm going to. And guess what happened? You moved to go run against me, so thanks for giving me the opportunity, Christina. You're out.
I'm gonna break, I apologize for doing this. I'm gonna break and ask for a point of information really quickly. Dr. Enfield, how was that training funded at Canyon Hills Junior High?
It was funded through the PTA.
So, can you repeat that? It was funded through what?
The PTA.
And how did that training come to Canyon Hills Junior High?
The principal and the PTA and staff members brought that to the district and did not bring it forward, and the Board approved it.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you for that clarification, Ms. Startup.
He just said he approved it. There you go.
I did not say that.
You said the district.
The district did not approve it.
Okay, so then you dropped, and who's in trouble for it?
I called a point of information because it's been brought up twice at the meeting.
And I'll step out for a second, because I know you're gonna kick me out.
No, no, Ms. Shaw, no one has asked you, so leave for the record, Ms. Shaw, no one has asked you to leave the meeting, you have every right to be here.
That you pointed out the law a few weeks ago.
Ms. Shaw?
Where is it?
Ms. Shaw?
We fought it, we had a lawyer send you guys something because you were gonna force the teachers to use pronouns. Where is it, Christina? Let's be real.
Ms. Shaw?
Where is it?
Ms. Shaw?
You guys are hurting kids, enough is enough.
Ms. Shaw?
Enough is enough, Christina, 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 enough is enough. Stand up for the kids. You called to action, called Tony Thurman to come down from Sacramento, how gross. But yet our teachers sit through a two and a half hour training, who's in trouble for it? Sending out gender cards? Enough is enough. It's horrifying.
Ms. Shaw, we had public comment on non-agenda items.
Wait, so you can have a platform to speak?
I'm not having a platform to speak. She asked Dr. Enfield a question, and instead of waiting another hour... Okay, excuse me. Ms. Startup?
You answered comments, you already said that many times.
Ms. Startup?
That's convenient.
Ms...
She's so ridiculous. Just go to Ontario, do your revealing on your phone, leave us alone.
Ms. Martinez? Ms. Martinez?
Yes? I'm here.
All right. As a parent, we have hired you, we have elected you for the purpose of helping in educating our kids. Your responsibility is to educate. I don't know where the statistics have come up that we're doing amazing in math, because we're not. My son used to get As in all his classes, and he's struggling to get a B in math right now. His teacher is not helping, I've gone to the principal, all she did was call and say, "No, he's doing fine." Fine, what does that mean, "fine"? He's not failing? Okay. I'm sure you've heard that California is the least literate state in the nation. And you wanna know why? Because California is not using their spending wisely. And it's the same here in our district. We cannot give raises to people that are already making astronomical amounts when our kids are suffering. They need to be taught, we need to give them the resources, we need to put the money into the kids and education, not into cabinet members and to a superintendent. If you say that our kids are priority, then you need to put the money where your mouth is. No one here needs a raise until the job is done. I have, again, talked to many parents, and a parent says, "Teachers need more resources and money. Kids need less busy work and real hands-on learning. The Board and Superintendent need to get a clue. The system is crumbling." Another, there's no funding for extracurricular activities and no teachers or funding for things like auto mechanics, woodshop, things that they need to learn to live in the world if they're not gonna be doctors and dentists and so forth. We need to have trades that we're teaching our kids. They need better electives. We do all kinds of fundraising, we have bingo, and yet we as parents are still paying for our kids to be in sports. We have to pay for, my daughter was on the JV soccer team. She had to pay to wear an old, dirty, nasty jersey. That's where the money needs to be going to. Our kids. Another parent, "I'm frustrated with the lack of parent input on important decisions. They need to stop training and doing in-services for CRT, sixteen-nineteen project, and so forth, worrying about pronouns, kitty litters, and tampons in the boys' bathrooms." We are paying our superintendent way more than he is worth.
Thank you.
Priorities.
Pat, are there any further speakers?
No further speakers.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Bridge, may I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Schaefer. Any comments, questions, or discussion on this item?
Request a roll call vote, please.
There's been a request for a roll call vote. Until then, Dr. Enfield, can I just ask for a point of clarification? Which employees does this action item apply to?
It applies to our directors, our principals, assistant principals, coordinators, and managers throughout the district.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, or discussion? There's been a request for a roll call vote. Mr. Bridge?
Hi.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, preferential?
Yes.
Motion carries four, zero, with preferential voting yes. Next is item 2A4, Addendum to Employment Contracts for Associate Superintendents, Business Services and Curriculum, Instruction, Innovation, and Support; Assistant Superintendents, Curriculum, Instruction, Innovation, and Support; Facilities Planning and Operations, and Human Resources Divisions. Recommend the Board of Education approve the addendum to the employment contracts for Associate Superintendents, Business Services, and Curriculum, Instruction, Innovation, and Support; Assistant Superintendents, Curriculum, Instruction, Innovation, and Support; Facilities Planning and Operations, and Human Resources Divisions as follows. Provide an 8.75% on-schedule salary increase for the 2022-2023 school year effective July 1st, 2022. A 2% off-schedule one-time payment as of July 1st, 2022 on the 2022-2023 base salary. And approve the revised salary schedule. Are there any speakers?
There are none.
Seeing as there are no speakers, we have to read all of this into the public record pursuant to government code. Hearing that there are no speakers, I'd like to make the following oral report. The Board will consider Executive Cabinet Contract Salary Amendments consisting of 8.75% on-schedule and 2% one-time off-schedule increases in alignment with ACT, CSCA, and CHAMP. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54953, Subdivision C3, the Board provides this oral summary of all components of compensation, new and existing salary-infringed benefits for the following local agency executives: Associate Superintendent Business Services; Associate Superintendent Curriculum, Instruction, Innovation, and Support; Assistant Superintendent Human Resources; Assistant Superintendent Curriculum, Instruction, Innovation, and Support; and Assistant Superintendent Facilities Planning and Operation. Two-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand seven-hundred-and-twenty annually for the Associate Superintendent Business Services Sandra Chen. Longevity in the amount of thirteen thousand nine-hundred-zero-three annually. 2% one-time off-schedule in the amount of four thousand nine-hundred-and-twelve dollars. CBO spending the amount of nine thousand eight-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars annually. Health and welfare benefits cap of ten thousand dollars annually and five hundred and fifty dollars monthly mileage. Organizational membership to AXA in the amount of one thousand six-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars annually. And vacation and sick leave, twenty-four annual vacation days and twenty-two annual sick days. Two-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand seven-hundred-and-twenty dollars annually for the Associate Superintendent Curriculum, Instruction, Innovation, and Support Grace Park. Longevity in the amount of nine thousand two-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars annually. 2% one-time off-schedule in the amount of four thousand eight-hundred-and-twenty dollars annually. Doctoral stipend the amount of nine thousand six-hundred-and-forty dollars annually. Health and welfare benefits cap of ten thousand dollars and five hundred and fifty dollars monthly mileage. Organizational membership to AXA in the amount of one thousand six-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars annually. And vacation and sick leave, twenty-four annual vacation days and twenty-two annual sick days. One-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand seventy-six dollars annually for the Assistant Superintendent Human Resources Richard Wrightout. 2% one-time off-schedule in the amount of three thousand nine-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars. Health and welfare benefits cap of ten thousand dollars and five hundred and fifty monthly mileage. Organizational membership to AXA in the amount of one thousand six-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars annually. And vacation and sick leave, twenty-four annual vacation days and twenty-two annual sick days. One-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand seventy-six annually for the Assistant Superintendent Curriculum, Instruction, Innovation, and Support Leah Fellows. Longevity in the amount of nineteen thousand eight-hundred-and-eight dollars annually. 2% one-time off-schedule in the amount of four thousand three-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars annually. Health and welfare benefits cap of ten thousand dollars and five hundred and fifty monthly mileage. Organizational membership to AXA in the amount of one thousand six-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars annually. And vacation and sick leave, twenty-four annual vacation days and twenty-two annual sick days. One-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand seventy-six dollars annually for the Assistant Superintendent Facilities Planning and Operation Greg Satura. Longevity in the amount of nineteen thousand eight-hundred-and-eight annually. 2% one-time off-schedule in the amount of four thousand three-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars. Health and welfare benefits cap of ten thousand dollars and five hundred and fifty dollars in monthly mileage. Organizational membership to AXA in the amount of one thousand six-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars annually. And vacation and sick leave, twenty-four annual vacation days and twenty-two annual sick days. Additionally, the Board... 22 annual sick days. Additionally, the Board provides this oral summary for the certified and classified cabinet salary schedule for board approval. Positions of local agency executives are: Associate Superintendent Business Service and Curriculum Innovation and Support, Assistant Superintendent Facilities and Planning, Curriculum, Instruction, Innovation, and Support, and Human Resources. The term of the new salary schedule is effective July 1, 2022. The recommended certified and classified cabinet salary schedule increases the amount of steps 1, 2, 3, and 4 as follows. For Associate Superintendent, step 1 is $205,999. Step 2 is $214,239. Step 3 is $222,808. And step 4 is $231,720. And for Assistant Superintendent, step 1 is $176,091. Step 2 is $183,133. Step 3 is $190,459. And step 4 is $198,076. There are no other elements of compensation recommended as part of executive-level salary increases and salary schedule. And with all of that, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Bridge. May I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Schaefer. Any comments, questions, and/or discussion?
Question, roll call vote.
Okay, there has been a request for a roll call vote. Before I honor such requests, any comments, questions, or discussion? All right, seeing no lights and no movement to speak, we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Bridge?
Hi.
Mr. Cruz?
No.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
And I'm a yes preferential?
Yes.
Motion carries 3, 1, 0 with preferential voting yes. Next is addendum to employment contract for the superintendent of the Chino Valley Unified School District. Recommend the Board of Education approve the addendum to the employment contract for the superintendent of the Chino Valley Unified School District as follows. Provide 8.75% on-schedule salary increase for the 2022-2023 school year effective July 1, 2022, and a 2% off-schedule one-time payment as of July 1, 2022, on the 2022-2023 base salary. Are there any speakers?
There are no speakers.
Seeing as there are no speakers, I must make an oral report about the superintendent's salary and benefits. The Board will consider the superintendent's amended contract consisting of 8.75% on-schedule and 2% one-time off-schedule increases in alignment with ACT, CSCE, and CHAMP. Pursuant to government code section 54953 subdivision C3, the Board provides this oral summary of the salary-infringed benefit recommendation for the following local agency executive. Position of the local agency executive is superintendent. The annual salary for 2022-2023 is $329,629. Longevity in the amount of $13,186 annually. 2% one-time off-schedule in the amount of $6,856 annually. Doctoral stipend, 4% doctoral stipend in the amount of $13,713 annually. Health and welfare benefits cap of $10,000. Organizational membership to AXA in the amount of $1,974 annually. Vacation and sick leave, 22 annual vacation days and 24 annual sick days. That concludes the oral report. May I have a motion?
So moved.
And may I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Schaefer. Any comments, questions, or discussion?
Please ask a roll call vote, please.
Okay, there's a request for a roll call vote. Once again, before I take that request, any comments, questions, or discussion? Seeing no lights and no movement to speak, we will go ahead and take that roll call vote. Mr. Bridge?
Hi.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion carries four zero preferential?
Yes.
Preferential also voting yes. Moving on to item 2A6, compensation increase for the Board of Education. Recommend the Board of Education approve 5% compensation increase effective October 1, 2022. Are there any speakers?
None.
Can I get a motion? Seeing as there's no motion from the Board, this item automatically dies. Moving on to our consent calendar, our item number three consent. Pat, are there any speakers on consent items?
None.
None? Okay. Then Board members, are there any pulls? Mr. Schaefer? Okay, no pulls. Mr. Bridge?
No pull.
Mr. Cruz?
No pulls.
And I have no pulls. Considering there are no pulls, all those in favor of approving the consent items as presented, please say aye.
Aye. I didn't catch a motion or second.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Schaefer, can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Bridge? All those in favor of approving consent items, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Preferential. Motion carries four zero preferential also voting yes. Moving on to item four, information items. Pat, are there any speakers on information items?
None.
Okay. Seeing as there are no speakers on information items, we will move on to Board comments, beginning with Mr. Schaefer.
No.
Okay, Mr. Schaefer has no comments. Mr. Bridge?
Just a couple of quick, quick comments. I attended the Music in Motion Band Festival and Tournament at Yalla High, and it was quite an event. I attended the evening session, was able to, and pleased to help present the awards. If you've never seen it, I would encourage you to go next year. The bands were tremendous. Their field shows are just tremendous. I don't know how the judging can judge it. I'm glad I'm not a judge. The point system, everything was very close. All the bands did a great job, and I was pleased to be there. I also attended the Don Lugo College Fair. I was glad to see that event come back this year after being, not being able to be held for a couple of, couple of years. There were over 60 schools that were in attendance. It was well-attended. I could barely get into the parking lot. So I was pleased to see that, and congratulations to the staff and everybody in the district that helped set that up. One thing I would hope that we'd be able to do in the future is maybe get more STEM and other, other technical schools to come to the college fairs as well. But on that, it was, it was a great job. And then lastly, I wanted to mention one retirement. Tried to keep up with these. This one especially in CSCE, retirement of Pilar Sevilla, paraprofessional over at Woodcrest Junior High. She's retiring at the end of the year, December 31. And I want to thank her for her 47 years of service to this district. That is just tremendous. And congratulations, and I certainly deserve the, she certainly deserves the recognition for the years that she put in in our district. Thank you very much to her. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz?
You know, I attended a funeral yesterday, and it was, her name was Addison. You know, they, they gave her a special graduation of June because they felt that she wasn't going to make it in her graduation. And so she made it all the way, all the way until now, which was pretty amazing. The things that we, that I heard is that, you know, you know, in the cancer ward, that she was compelled, and she supported and cared for others. She, she started a nonprofit, hospitalized, you know, kids that had cancer in the ward. She, she made comfortable blankets and where, and raised awareness of pediatric cancer. And, you know, while hearing their discussion, you know, in the funeral, it was, there was, there was, the hospital, there was a broken, it was broken in terms of, you know, how the system was going at, going about it. And that was that, that they stated that they weren't able to explore alternative treatments unless she was like over the age of 18. And I thought that was something so, I thought that was not right at all. But it was, it was a very beautiful and touching experience yesterday. And I just want to bring up some things about vaccines. And a lot of things were, have been going on for the past two weeks. Let me name a few. You know, Pfizer executive admits under oath, "We never tested COVID vaccine against transmission." They stated, "Was the Pfizer COVID vaccine tested on stopping the transmission of the virus before it entered the market? Did we know about stopping immunization before it entered the market?" And the answer is no. You know, we had to really move at the speed of science to know what is taking place in the market. At this time, data are not available to make a determination about how long the vaccine will provide protection, nor there is evidence that the vaccine prevents transmission of COVID-2 from person to person. And so, you know, during those times, you know, in the media, people were saying, telling the audience that the virus cannot infect or be spread by vaccinated individuals. Experts making similar false claims that vaccine blocks you from getting or giving the virus, getting the virus. The president claimed that fully vaccinated people are at a very, very low risk of gaining COVID-19, while his chief medical advisor spreading similar issues and urge people to take the vaccine. When people are vaccinated, they can feel safe that they're not going to get infected. We all have, we all, the vaccines are needed. We just need our people to take it for their own protection, protection of their own family and others, but also to break the chain of transmission. And so all this time, you know, the word, the speed of science, they used the word the speed of science, that's why they weren't able to test this, and the word follow the science, which was completely a lie. You know, the purpose of a vaccine is to reduce transmission or completely stop it. That is the function of vaccine. And through this experience, people were fired, pressured, they were bullied. It is estimated that millions of people have died from this, and many, many more have health conditions. But what has happened today is much more horrible, and that is, and you have to listen, parents. And this is, this is, this is such an important issue that I'm going to bring up. The CDC Virus Committee on Immunization Practice voted 15-0 today to add the COVID-19 to the children's recommended vaccine schedule. And knowing the fact that this is an experiment, they have placed it as a vaccine schedule. I mean, when you hear the fat shakers, they say, oh, you know, everything's fine. It's not going to happen now. It is so imperative that you pick the right board members, because the consequences will be so dire in the future. And I just want to tell you, this ain't going to end. The president says there's going to be a next pandemic. Bill Gates says the same thing. And then just recently, a Boston University, they have, they have created a lethal Omicron. You see what's coming. There's going to be another pandemic. They're setting this for the future. So you need, and it's so dire, people, you need the right board members to stop this, because when it does happen, when they do require this, at least you have board members that are not going to pressure your kids to get this vaccine. And then it will be a choice, a parent choice. It has to be, because they're going to push this, and something's coming up the pike. You can feel it. It's going to happen. Even their own words, they say another pandemic. So it is really up to us if we're going to really, if you really want to suffer or not. Because I would suspect if it goes the other way, I think most of the people will take your kids out of the public education by force. You'll have to do that. I'll give you some data. There was an Oxford study. Two doses of COVID-19 vaccine makes you 44% more likely to be infected. And then let me read you this one. Florida Department of Health Department conducted an analysis through self-controlled case series, which is a technique originally developed to evaluate vaccine safety. This study mortality risks following mRNA COVID-19 vaccination. This analysis found that there is an 84% increase in the relative incidence of cardiac-related deaths among males 18 and 39 years old. This is Florida. This is the surgeon of Florida that DeSantis has appointed. And then I asked myself, well, I just heard just recently that a pharmaceutical company, they have announced a development of a new mRNA injection to repair heart muscle after a heart attack. So, so you know, there's a lot of BS going on, people. We have to really pay attention, because there's so much bull crap. And then there's a case study that they're finding spike proteins in, in this person's brain and in, and in the heart, too. So, you know, there's a lot of things that as, as this progresses, we're going to, we're hearing more about this dreadful vaccine that has occurred. Then I want to talk about the people they've been bringing up about this in-service. What is the purpose of this inverse in-service? Well, for educators, the aim is to teach and to train teachers. It includes teaching new ways of doing things and maybe even introduce new ways of thinking. I say this because I do take workshops, too, as school starts. So, and the whole purpose of these workshops is, is you learn something and you can get, convey it to your students. So, how to connect with students, those are just some of the new nonsense of, and in-service. So I was made aware of this in-service that took place at the start of the school year and covered a controversial topic, looking over and then service materials, being aware that the subject matter is highly controversial. And then I asked myself, this is what I asked myself, what am I not seeing? Why are so many parents and employees bringing this up? And what is the big picture? What is the big picture? What are, what are they driving? What are they pushing? And why not they talk about the encouragement of the Constitution or being male and female? So, so what is the change? So that is, that, there is a massive push for this. And then I've been reflecting about CRT. What we should be teaching in CRT is being a victim. There's three things, and that is our own ignorance, our own laziness, and our own poor decision-making skills. Critical race they're into our classroom will take our nation in the wrong direction. Races in America would be in large dead if we were not certain people, media, institutions keeping on live support. Sadly, one of those institutions is in our education system. So damaging to tell a child born today that she has grievances against another child today simply because what their ancestors may have done to them centuries ago. No point in doing this except bringing hate, anger to divide America. And the bottom line, you know, we want our kids to go to the stars and, and explore, just like Lewis and Clark. And I hope that our country turns around and really change everything that's what's occurring. And you know, lastly, you know, I enjoy science. This week, I think October 9th, there was a gamma ray burst that was detected that was aimed at Earth, planet Earth. And this laser, that's what is this, like a beam, it came from 2.4 billion light years away. And, and I asked myself, you know, there's many, many things that we don't understand about climate. But these certain elements, you never know that they could change climate. So I just wanted, you know, bring that up. That was interesting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Dr. Enfield, do you have any comments?
No comments.
Okay, I have two brief announcements. One is the Chino Valley Chamber of Commerce is having its Kids Entrepreneur Fair at the Shops in Chino Hills on November 5. There's over 60 students who have businesses that they will be setting up booths and selling their goods and services. And then there's also a pitch competition following the Kids Entrepreneur Fair for 7th through 12th graders. Over 10 student teams from Chino Valley Unified will be competing in sort of a Shark Tank-style pitch competition. So if you were at the Shops on that day, I would encourage you to visit. And with that, we adjourn the meeting at 7:08 PM. Have a good evening.